We're ready?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, may everything we do begin with your inspiration. Lord, you know that we seek you first in all that we do for our citizens and our community. That our work always be through you. We lift your name in those in need healing. Lord, I thank you for this special day as we honor Lieutenant Javier Ramon, who with the power of prayer and your understanding that he is here with us today and back home. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call for the presentation of the proclamation for Lieutenant Javier Ramon. Chief Comigas, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. With us today, I'm glad to report Lieutenant Javier Ramon is back with us here in our community. It's beautiful to have him and his beautiful family here with us today. And the proclamation today is to honor him. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Lieutenant Ramon, a 27-year veteran of the Mission Police Department and an accomplished leader in our Criminal Investigation Bureau, whereas Lieutenant Ramon was first hospitalized on August 3, 2020 with a devastating coronavirus, aka COVID-19, with the support and prayers of his wife of 14 years, Edith, and his two children, Emily, Samantha, and Christian Javier, and the prayers of our community, Lieutenant Ramon's battle with COVID-19 has subsided. And whereas Mission Police Lieutenant Javier Ramon was welcomed home by his Mission Police Department family to include federal, state, county, and local municipal law enforcement agencies and the citizens of our great community with a surprise parade on Saturday, January 23, 2021, after being released from a San Antonio hospital. And whereas Lieutenant Ramon's faith gave him the strength to fight COVID-19, returned to his community and continued to recover at home with his family at his side. Whereas the City of Mission has confirmed 156 of its residents lost their lives due to COVID-19 and currently reports 1,675 active cases, strongly advocates the importance of continuing to take precautions such as social distancing, wearing masks in public, frequent hand washing, and limiting exposure to others. The City of Mission, along with medical professionals and the community partners, are working diligently to provide vaccines. Working together, we'll get through this unprecedented time. And whereas the City Council of the City of Mission joins with the Mission Police Department and our community in welcoming home Javier, Lieutenant Javier Ramon, and wishes him complete healing and a fast recovery. And now therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Mission, proclaim the 8th day of February, 2021, as Lieutenant Javier Ramon Day in the City of Mission. Lieutenant Ramon represents hope for our community and everyone who has been impacted by this global pandemic. Proclaim on this the 8th day of February, 2021.
Amen.
With pride and honor and joy, this chair will entertain a motion for the proclamation.
Move for approval, Mayor?
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, Mayor.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
I don't know, Javier, you want to say a few words or?
No.
It's okay.
We will move around. Will you present your...
Is there a proclamation for you?
And we want to have a photo for it. I'd like to lay two good terms and welcome you home. All the citizens, not only the citizens of the mission, but the community, all that you serve. When you give your time and effort to us, the full officer always looks at you. Continue to continue growth for us. And we want to see you back in control. At the top, it's willing to give you that up. You always give it up. We're going to move around this way.
Javier, your head? Get the force a little more. Maybe around a little bit some?
Again, three, two, one. One, two, one.
Thank you.
Yeah, she's getting... Yes.
Amy, Amy, how does it feel?
She needs to sign it.
She's...
She's undoing the walk.
Also, he has people outside waiting for him.
Oh, that's nice.
Continuing with the agenda items, I would like to call item number two. Ms. Del Rey, if you can hear me, please, you have the floor.
See you on turn.
I'll see you, Mayor.
Alex.
Turn it here, Mayor. Do you want to return to the mayor?
If Del Rey is not on the Zoom, I will... I have a camera of the computer.
There's a camera computer there.
Yeah. I don't see a view either, so. Okay. I will call back the agenda item as soon as you let me know that she's on and available. I will call for item number three, departmental reports. Mr. Perez and the council, you have the departmental reports in your package. This is your time to ask any questions on the direct to department, on any other report that was submitted to you, if right.
May I move to approve the reports as presented?
We have a motion to approve the reports as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries the passage by five oh. Opening for citizen participation. Ms. Hernandez, do you have anybody that has officially signed up for citizen participation for any of the items on the agenda or just the agenda?
No, sorry, no.
You don't? Sorry, do you have anybody that has raised their hands in the front? Alex, do you have somebody? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and continue with consent agenda item. All consent agenda items are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless the council member requests an item to be removed and considered separately. The city council may take various actions included, but not limited to reschedule an item in its entirety for a future date or time. The city of council may elect to go into executive session for any item, whether or not such item is supposed to be an executive session item at any time during the meeting when authorized by the provision of the Open Meeting Act. Items number five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, resolution 17, 12, 11, 12, resolution 17, 13, 13, resolution number seven, 14, 14, resolution number 17, 15, number 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Council?
Mayor, I'd like to pull number 16 and number 19.
Number what?
Number 16.
16.
And number 19.
And number 19, okay. Any other, any of the council? What is the wish of the council for the rest of the items?
I move to approve with the exception of 16 and 19.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries five zero for item five, item six, item seven, item nine, item 10, resolution 17, 12, item 11, item 12, resolution number 17, 13, number 13, resolution number 17, 15, number 14, resolution number 17, 15, number 15, and 17, 18, and 20. This, I will call for item number 16. And Ms. Nasa, you have the floor since you...
I'd just like more information here on the item. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item number 16, we're seeking authorization to solicit qualifications for a face approach annexation service. This would be, phase one would be voter registration verification and confirmation of a minimum of 50%. Phase two will include services, official notices to property owners, neighboring entities, legal publications, survey, community outreach, service plan, annexation schedule, premise to deliver a final annexation proposal for annexation. On any annexation that has a population of less than 200, an election process needs to take place. Since this is a fairly new process, we are seeking council's direction on this.
I was going to ask, soliciting qualification, does that mean you're going to hire professional services?
Yes.
It says professional service?
Yes.
You could go for a proposal, Mayor, if you want to hire... If you want to cast a wider net.
She's recommending professional services, am I correct?
Yes.
And what kind of person or company or entity?
It would be like an engineer.
An engineering company?
An engineering company.
Would do this? Would check voter registration?
We're seeking because this is the first of its time. Nobody has ever done an election process. We've contacted several engineers and I believe the only one that has responded that was Melden and Hunt.
Okay. And they know what... They know they need to go and check voter registration verifications and that type of stuff?
But since this is... Since it's the only company that responded, that's why we're trying to seek for more.
Okay. Which other cities are probably doing the same thing, correct?
Yes. This is a new process. We've never done any annexation like this. The process was different before, so that's why we're seeking.
Yeah, because the process actually changed recently because of the requirement of an election of the area, and question.
Yes.
Right. Mayor, I have a question. Ms. Deluna? How do we go about informing the general community and other... Not just engineers, but whoever could possibly bid for this?
If you're going to open it up for general bidding, then we have to take the recommendation of our city attorney and change from soliciting qualification to soliciting proposal. And if that's your wish, you know, we can entertain that into a motion, am I correct?
Now, as far as the timeline, how soon do you need this? Could we go out for proposal and is that going to give you all enough time to do the project?
Well, we're going to seek for proposals to start. We don't know how much it's going to... How long is it going to take?
General question, Mr. Belmanes. What do you... What do we do to...
Yes, ma'am. We actually... We've been working on this for a while. We've been doing research to determine a scope of service and how we propose to phase it into the annexation process and working with the consultants and, you know, doing research, inquiring with other cities to see what they're doing. We have determined that the best approach is seeking qualifications. We would define the most qualified firm that presents to us a program or a plan as to how to go about the process that's new to everyone.
Could it be that after you all choose? I mean, I'm just estimating. If 10 come and you all pick the top three after the committee has chosen, can those three come and make a presentation to us and then we decide?
Most definitely, ma'am, yes.
If it's qualifications, yes.
I would rather see the qualifications as recommended by staff.
Okay. So, my last proposal, qualifications.
Qualification.
Proposals or qualifications.
You all do...
Proposals or qualifications.
On proposal, you will go and they give you a price and all that?
That's correct, Mr. Plata. We wouldn't base it solely on qualifications. We would also request for pricing.
That's a different, right?
Yes.
Proposal, you put a price.
The difference is also the level of competence that can apply, you know, because the level of... The ones that are professional have seals. Have seals. They got to have a seal to be able to qualify the professional services or have a master's degree or above, like a lawyer or a doctor, you know.
Engineer, architect.
Yeah, architect.
But we don't have control pretty much about the price, right?
We do reserve the right to negotiate for fair and reasonable pricing once the council determines who they want to engage. We will negotiate with them based on historical rates, historical pricing, what other cities have contracted with cost-wise. We would try to determine a benchmark price for that.
And also, if we don't come to an agreement with the company that's rated the, you know, first, then we have the option to go to the second one and negotiate a price at that time.
On proposal.
On qualifications.
Well, actually, a vote. Or even rebid if you can't come. Yeah, rebid also.
Mayor, the only thing that I was going to ask, Mr. Belmanes, is I just want to make sure that we go through the avenues of making sure that there's businesses out there that would want to apply and allowing them to know.
This is posted on the website and in a newspaper as well?
That is correct, ma'am. We advertise it and we post it and we send out email notifications inviting the public or firms or companies to come in and submit their proposals for qualifications.
Okay, thank you. I move for approval as presented by staff, Mayor.
We have a motion on the floor.
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries the five oh, and I'm calling for item number 19. Ms. Nasa, you have the floor.
Mayor, if at all possible, I'd like to go into executive session on this item.
I will entertain a motion under executive session.
Seeking a...
55.1.001 of the Texas BTCA Government Code. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do you have a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign. Motion carries. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I will entertain a motion, Mr. Plata, you recognize the reconvene, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All support same sign, motion carries. Uh, Mr. Martinez, let us take care of the action of the executive session. Item number thirty-six.
Thirty-six A, Mayor requires a motion to authorize city manager to acquire appraisal for the properties that we discussed in the executive session.
I'm going to drop through. We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All support same sign, motion carries. Item number thirty-seven, Mr. Martinez.
Yes, Mayor, thirty-seven A requires a motion to accept settlement offer on mowing liens law twenty-four dash two west addition to shareland.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All support same sign, motion carries five oh. Um, on the personnel matter, Mr. Martinez, what do we have?
Yes, sir, on thirty-eight A, we have a no action item.
We have no action, therefore I want to move over and, and, uh, and call for approvals and authorization. Item number twenty-one.
We have item number nineteen.
Item number nineteen, correction, that's right, uh, item number nineteen, step corrected, Mr. Martinez.
On number sixteen, we already took action on that one, on number nineteen, uh, in the executive session, there will be no action.
On number nineteen, we have no action, therefore, uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna go, go ahead and call for the approvals and authorization. Item number twenty-one, Mr. Martinez, thank you for, and, um, let's see, who, Mr. Luna, you have, uh, you have the floor, Mayor.
Item twenty-one is a preliminary plot approval for Los Ebanos estate subdivision. This is a fifteen point sixty-five acre tract of land being a part or portion of law twenty-eight dash two west addition to shareland. They're proposing R one, the developer is Earthworks Development, Inc., and the engineer is Javierino Rosa. This property is located five hundred feet south from the intersection of West Maltrú Road and Los Ebanos Road. They're proposing, uh, sixty-one single-family residential lots. It has city water and sewer. PNC and staff recommended approval of this subdivision. Sign them down before you.
I will entertain a motion or direction from the council.
My move for approval is presented.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, I'll open it up for final discussion, Mr. Perez, you have the floor.
Uh, this is a public hearing, is it?
No.
No, this is preliminary. We're not, we're not in the public hearing yet, Mr. Perez.
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna be seeing the, the rezoning and the public hearing for this particular subdivision.
Any questions by any of the council member, if not, I will call for a vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All support same sign, motion carries.
It's a four vote, Americans.
The motion carries four oh is for the record. Item number twenty-two, Ms. Vela, yeah, I see I'm zoomed. Vela, you have the floor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council, item number twenty-two is approval of the November twenty twenty financial statements. Total revenues for the month were two million seven hundred and forty dollars and one hundred and seventeen, I'm sorry, two million seven hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seventeen dollars. Total expenditures for the month were six million twenty-four thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars, with total encumbrances of nine million, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, equalling a total of fifteen million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars. Total unadjusted fund balance at the end of the month was fifteen million, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-three dollars. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I'm all for approval.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, it is open up for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All support same sign, motion carries five oh for the record. Item number twenty-three, Mr. Belmonte, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, item twenty-three, approval of purchasing department procurement manual outlining policies and procedures for city emission acquisitions. The manual was revised to include an increase to the dollar threshold to see competitive bids proposals in quotes. The dollar threshold for capital items will increase from two fifty to one thousand. The policies and procedures outlined in the manual will ensure that city departments comply with federal, state, and local statutes regulating competitive sales bids, competitive sale proposals, professional services, high-technology purchases, cooperative purchases, emergency, and sole-source purchases. Staff recommendation is the approval of the revised procurement manual.
Uh, excuse me, sir, Eduardo, if you can go over the, um, the detail, there are some other, uh, changes regarding the procurement, uh, policy.
Yes, we have, uh, made some changes or revisions to the manual, um, and I'll briefly go through them, um, we, we opted to go with, uh, procurement instead of purchasing. Procurement, we've defined it and, uh, references to the changes deals with sourcing activities, negotiation, and strategic selecting of goods and services that are usually of importance to an organization. Uh, I outlined on there the sections that would also, uh, be part of procurement. Purchasing is the process of good, how goods and services are ordered, gives you the, uh, definition, uh, the difference between one and the other. What is the end goal, how good services are assessed, when it's deployed, tasks involved, how it deals with suppliers. We also adopted a code of ethics, um, for the procurement procedures, uh, we went more in-depth referencing, uh, purchasing purpose, scope, and objectives. We also, uh, introduced the procurement card policies and procedures in case we choose to go that with that option later on, we will have that already in place. Uh, we would just have to make sure that we, uh, implement the, the policies and procedures to make sure that we manage the procurement card system, uh, in accordance with, with the procedures adopted here. Changes to the purchase order requirement to the following, POs up to one thousand do not require any competitive quotes, must be accompanied with a formal quote with memo request. Before we had it at two hundred dollars, anything less than two hundred wouldn't require quotes, uh, now we're, uh, recommending to increase it from two hundred to one thousand to try to make the process more efficient and effective for the department, uh, for the departments and department staff in their operations. POs between one thousand and three thousand, we would require verbal telephone quotes must be obtained from three vendors for purchases in, in dollar range using an exhibit, uh, B form. And POs between three thousand and twenty-five thousand, formal quotes for purchases of more than three thousand but less than twenty-five thousand, obtain three written quotes unless it's a sole source or cooperative. At that point, we wouldn't require for them to get competitive quotes. We also included, uh, Federal Acquisition Streamline Act of nineteen ninety-four for any future procurements that, uh, require, uh, federal regulations, uh, we will have those already in place. And previous, uh, projects or procurements, I've been, I've been required by the federal sourcing, uh, federal agency that's the funding source to have policies and procedures in place that would, uh, guide us through the formal process that they have in place. So we also included that in there, we also outlined the process for request proposals, the content of the request proposals, professional services, the process that we would, uh, require for the departments to follow for that, bidding requirements, the best value bidder, a bid protest whenever there's a, uh, a formal protest by a vendor or contractor, we have that in place as well. Insurance requirements that we are obligated to have by the state, uh, and by our risk management department for all of our, uh, work services ready to city emission to make sure that we minimize risk in terms of liability for the city. Change orders to existing purchase orders and contracts, legal requirements, exemptions from competitive bidding as well, we have also included that in there, which is allowed by the Texas Local Government Code, cooperative purchases, uh, piggybacking, whenever we want to take advantage of economies of scale through other, uh, entities that we wanna, uh, try to piggyback off their contracts to try to get the most competitive pricing. Joint purchases, emergency purchases as well, uh, we've, uh, adopted that process as to how to approach the emergency, and whenever there's, uh, any, uh, public calamity that we need to address in a timely manner, we have these pro, these procedures in place for that. Sole-source purchases, what defines the sole source, capital items, we changed it from two fifty to one thousand, that's a recommendation, procurement policy, statement of work, federal regulations, and we have a blocking procurement terms as well. And I've attached a draft of the procurement procedures, uh, that has been reviewed by legal counsel and by our departments, by our city manager, and, uh, by my, by me, we've, uh, worked on it in my department, and, uh, we feel that is, it's, it's a good, uh, procurement procedure, procurement policy and procedures that we can implement and, and abide by.
Is this something that we have to, uh, approve today?
Yes, well, it's on the agenda for approval.
Yes.
I would like to get it approved today, ma'am, so I can start coordinating trainings for all the departments, for you as well, if you choose to attend, I'll be more than happy to send you an invite for us to go through the entire manual and guide you and explain to you everything that, that is included in the manual.
Would two weeks, would two weeks be a big, uh, issue problem for you?
No, ma'am.
No? Okay, I would really like to, to read it carefully.
Okay.
Uh, and, and hopefully see it at our next meeting, ma'am.
Yeah, well, I was gonna ask you, did you attach a, a copy of the manual to the, to the packet today?
Yes, ma'am.
So everybody has a copy of the manual?
Yes.
Can I have it, can I have it emailed separately?
Of course.
So that I can print it out, just that, that one, uh, PDF?
Yes, ma'am, I will make sure that it gets seen.
We have like hundreds of pages.
I have a question, uh, Mr. Belmonte.
Yes, ma'am.
On, on the, the dollar threshold for the capital items will be between two fifty to one thousand, that doesn't mean that all purchases above one thousand are capitalized as a, as a capital, uh, purchase, right?
That's correct, ma'am.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Or, or including the, uh, the consumables?
Including the consumable doesn't really matter whether it's, uh, it would increase over.
No, but they won't be, they won't be considered capital, capital, uh, purchases.
Capital items, no, ma'am.
Yeah, which is a nine thousand series of, on the accounts.
That's correct.
Yeah, because you still have the, um, just, I just wanted to make sure because we're, we're not looking at the, at the consumables, you know, we're just looking at the, yeah.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Belmonte, when you and your staff were working on this, uh, putting this, uh, procurement manual together, of course, you, uh, went ahead and saw what other municipalities compared what they have to what we're about to propose. Um, my question is, I think a lot of the directors with the two fifty going up to a thousand, um, is that comparable to whatever everybody has, is it too high, is it just good?
Yes, ma'am, uh, it's comparable with other entities.
Okay.
That they have those dollar thresholds, it makes, it makes them more efficient, we've actually, I've worked with other, uh, purchasing director from other, uh, cities, and we are sharing this manual, and we've given each other feedback back and forth, and I think we've ironed out all the details, and they're adopting it for their entities, and I'm proposing to adopt it for our entity as well.
But of course, I want to also open it up, Mr. Belmonte, that if, uh, in six months or a year, you feel that, uh, that the manual is not doing the job that you intended to do it, uh, when, once we finally approve, don't hesitate to come back for, to make the improvements, okay? Because procurement is a very, you know, it's a, it's an everyday event, and, and we don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that you have the, the tools necessary to be able to, to, to supply all the departments with the necessary tools for them to operate on a daily basis.
Yes, Mayor, this is a working document, uh, as new innovative, uh, ways and change, and things, you know, come up, uh, we would definitely entertain them to implement it in, as part of our manual, uh, there's also legislation coming up all the time that we need to consult with our legal counsel to make sure that we are covered in our manual.
How many pages the manual?
Over seventy pages, ma'am.
Can I, uh?
To include the attachments.
Can I entertain a motion to table it, and, uh, so we can leave it on the agenda?
Yes, so moved, ma'am.
We have a motion to table, do I hear a second?
Second.
And, and this is open up for final discussion, the purpose of the table is to give the time to review it, and then come back in, in the next city council meeting, and either approve or disapprove, or make changes, modify, or whatever that we need to do to make it better.
Thank you, Mayor.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All support same sign, motion carries, the motion is tabled five oh.
And if we could each get a PDF just on the. And if we could each get a PDF just on the manual, please.
Yes, ma'am, I'll make sure that everyone gets a, a PDF copy.
Okay.
Feel free to let me know if you have any questions or concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item number twenty-four, uh, we'll call it, Mr. Salinas, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, good evening, mayor and city council members. This, uh, agenda item is the authorization to submit application to amend, uh, sanitary sewer certificate of convenience and necessity. The existing, uh, land use in this area, uh, which we're seeking to, to submit the amendment for the sewer certificate is approximately three thousand nine hundred and forty-six acres. And this primarily, uh, encompasses the, uh, residential agriculture and a small amount of commercial. Again, the purpose of, uh, this application is to request to incorporate this area to the city of Mission existing, uh, sanitary sewer, uh, C C N. So attach, uh, we have, uh, the application and the actual, uh, map depicting or showing the area, which is, uh, if you can see on your map, it's, uh, on mile six, uh, north between La Joma and Morefield to mile seven, and then on mile seven, uh, between Benson Palm and Los Ebanos to mile ten, which is of Monte Cristo. So that's the area that we're looking, uh, to amend our, our sanitary sewer certificate of, uh, necessity, of convenience and necessity. Staff and city manager recommend approval to submit application.
I would like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and it's open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, motion carries, then you can file the application, it's been approved by vote. And number, item number twenty-five, Mr. Perez, you have the floor on modifying COVID-nineteen city emission guidelines.
I guess, uh, mayor, I, this item is a, uh, discussion possible action on modifying COVID-nineteen, uh, city emission guidelines. Uh, this is the opportunity for the council to amend, uh, our current guidelines. Uh, we do have a couple of, uh, requests, uh, mayor, uh, regarding this. Uh, one of them is, is, uh, we do have a request for their cemetery services at our veterans cemetery uh, to be able to, uh, utilize, uh, to do in, in military honor. Uh, right now, currently, we are not due to COVID and that's, uh, a request that, that we're asking for approval uh, for us to continue with the, doing the, the, these memorials, uh, in, in full, uh, military honor. So we are requesting that. Also, um, in our Parks Department, we are asking for, to open up for lap swimming to the public, uh, our pools uh, by appointment only. Uh, we are, uh, we, we do have, uh, a request, um, quite a few requests from the public that they want to, uh, join in lap swimming. Uh, we currently are utilizing the pools from the different school districts. Uh, of course, they're being, uh, by appointment as well and also, um, being sanitized as they're being utilized. So that, uh, we are requesting that, uh, as well. Uh, and the other request is, uh, we have been, uh, receiving, um, quite a bit of requests in our Parks Department uh, regarding the use of the baseball fields, uh, whether it's going to be for rental and practices. Um, currently, um, teams out there are asking for the use of the baseball fields, uh, through rental purposes for practice and for, uh, potential tournaments. So that is, uh, that is a request that, that came from our Parks Department. Um, and that's, that's what we currently have at this time. Uh, we are, uh, also, uh, continuing with our, our, uh, existing, uh, guidelines that we have in our, our municipal buildings. And, uh, we're continuing as is, no, no modifications to that currently.
Any other, Mr. Perez?
That's it.
Any, uh, other from the council, any direction, any new modifications you would like to add or, or?
No, I'm, I'm.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve the new, the, the recommendations Mr. Perez has recommended? Uh, so we can put him on our, our restriction, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion.
So moved, ma'am.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second, ma'am.
You have a motion and second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, motion carries, and for the record, it's four oh.
Thank you.
Okay? And I'll go to the planning and zoning recommendations, um, and we'll go into the public hearings and it's, uh, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor for the public hearing, ma'am.
Mayor, item twenty-six is a rezoning for a point six zero two six of one acre tract of land out of lot one eighty-two Johnny Sherry subdivision. This is from R-one single-family residential to R-three multifamily. Jose R. Gonzalez is the applicant. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located near the Glasscock Road and East Two and a Half Street intersection along the east side of Glasscock. Surrounding zones include R-one to the west and south, commercial, neighborhood commercial to the north, agricultural to the east. Existing land uses include to the north commercial, to the east vacant, and to the western south single-family residential. The future land use map shows low-density residential for this area. The proposed zone does not comply with the city's future land use map nor surrounding land uses. Staff feels that R-one would be a better neighbor for this area, so staff is recommending denial as well as P and Z. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
The current zoning is R-one already, right?
Yes. Sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Right?
Yes, sorry.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against the rezoning, please, uh, anybody at the audience, please approach the podium? I do not see anybody approaching the podium at this time, therefore, I'm going to ask for the electronic. Do we have anybody that has raised their hands and, uh, to which to speak on the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
We have nobody. I will close this public hearing and I will, uh, ask for direction from the council.
I'm going to approve the recommendation of the planning and zoning and staff to behind.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second to deny the request of rezoning, uh, and this is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, motion carries and, uh, item number twenty-six does not pass by vote. And, and correction, it passes at the recommendation of the denial of the rezon, just for the record, for the record. And I'll call for item number twenty-seven, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item twenty-seven is a rezoning for a five-point gross acre tract of land, more or less out of that certain seventeen-point-eighty-eight acre tract of lot twenty-nine dash four, west addition to Sherland. This is from A O I to R-one. The applicant is David Sanchez. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The site is located a quarter of a mile north of West Two Mile Road along the west side of Prosper Road. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the northeast and west and single-family residential to the south. Existing land uses include single-family residential to the northeast and south and United Irrigation District to the west. The site is currently vacant, the future land use map shows low-density residential. The proposed zone complies with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. P and Z and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Anybody at the audience, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I will call for the electronic to the, anybody with their hands and public hearing?
No, ma'am.
I will close this public hearing and, 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 and look for the, uh, direction of the council.
One more question.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second to approve the rezoning, and this is open for final discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, motion carries and for the record, it be ordinance forty-nine eighty-seven. Forty-nine eighty-seven for the record, and I'm calling for item number twenty-eight, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item twenty-eight is a rezoning for a fifteen-point-sixty-five acres out of lot twenty-eight dash two, west addition to Sherland. This is from A O I agricultural to R-one single-family residential. The applicant is Susan Kawamoto. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance, it's going to be needed. The site is located near the west Two and a Half Mile Road and Los Ebanos intersection along the west side of Los Ebanos. Surrounding zones include agricultural to the northeast, west, and south. Existing land uses include single-family residential to the northeast, west, and south. The site is currently vacant. The future land use map shows this area as low-density. The proposed zone does comply with the city's future land use map and surrounding land uses. P and Z and staff recommended approval. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you. This is the subdivision that we saw earlier.
Yes, the one that we already approved.
Okay, yes.
So.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against this rezoning? Anybody from the audience, if you want to speak on this rezoning, uh, please, uh, approach the podium? I don't see anybody approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to move over to the electronics and I'm going to ask.
No, none.
We, we have nobody on electronics, so I'm going to close this public hearing and look for direction from the council. Councils, whatever you wish. We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, uh, motion carries by vote and it be ordinance forty-nine eighty-eight for the record. Now I'm calling for item number twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine is another rezoning for a hundred and seventy-six point five seventy-four acres being part or all of lots nine dash seven, nine dash eight, nine dash nine, nine dash ten, ten dash seven, ten dash eight, ten dash nine, ten dash ten, eleven dash seven, eleven dash eight, eleven dash nine, west addition to Sherland. This is from agricultural to P U D, Plan Unit Development. The applicant is Charco Land Sales LLC. If the council is inclined to approve this item, an adoption of an ordinance would be needed. The subject site is located near the Anza Luis Highway and Los Indios Road intersection along the north side of Los Indios. The surrounding zones include agricultural to the northeast, west, and south. Existing land uses is vacant to the northeast and south, to the west is the city park. The, the area is currently vacant, the future land use map shows lower-density residential. The proposed zone complies with the future land use map and surrounding land uses. Staff and P and Z recommended approval, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this rezoning? If there's anybody from the audience that would like to speak, you, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time, so I'm going to ask for electronics to see if anybody has raised their hand to speak on, on behalf or against the rezoning.
None, ma'am.
We have nobody, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for direction from the council.
Want to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, motion carries, uh, rezoning is approved at five oh and ordinance number forty-nine eighty-nine for the record. Forty-nine eighty-nine for the record, and I'm calling for item number thirty.
Item number thirty is a conditional use permit renewal for a home occupation. This is a beauty salon at three seventeen South Allen Avenue. This is lot five, lot seven, Erdel subdivision. The applicant is Gloria Hernandez. If the council is inclined to approve this item and adoption of an ordinance, will be needed. The subject site is located two hundred feet south of Lial along the east side of Holland Road. The last conditional use permit for this home occupation was approved by P and Z on January eighth, twenty twenty for a period of one year. The applicant would like to renew the C U P for the home occupation. The applicant has a one-chair hair salon at her residence. All customers are by appointment only to eliminate the accumulation of vehicles on her property. Access to the site is from Holland where customers can park on the applicant's driveway, which is wide enough and deep enough to accommodate up to four vehicles. Ms. Hernandez is the only, uh, person running the salon. The days and hours of operation are Monday through Friday from nine to seven by appointment only. P and Z and staff recommended approval. Uh, for one year reevaluation to continue assessing the operation and continue compliance with Home Occupation Code. This is a public hearing, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor against this conditional use permit? Anybody from the audience, please approach the podium at this time? I don't see anybody from the audience approaching the podium, therefore, I'm going to ask for the electronic. If there's anybody in, on electronic?
None, ma'am.
We have no, nobodies, therefore, I'm going to close the, the public hearing and ask for direction from the council.
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, and this is open for discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those, both same sign, motion carries, for the record, it's a five oh, conditional use permit is approved and ordinance number forty-nine ninety will be assigned. Item number thirty-one, it's a public hearing, Ms. Deluna, you have the floor.
Item thirty-one is the first public hearing on proposed annexation for a seventeen-point-ninety-five acre tract of land, more or less out of lot eleven dash one, west addition to Sherland. On annexation, the city council is required to hold two public hearings to, to acquire public input. This is a voluntary annexation, the property is adjacent to Mission City Limits and it has city water and sewer in use or available, the property, um, the property is under voluntary annexation, this is a public hearing, uh, this item is now before you.
This is a public hearing, anybody in favor or against this annexation proposal? Anybody from the audience, please approach the, the podium? I do not see anybody approaching the podium from the audience, therefore, I'm going to ask for the electronics.
None, ma'am.
We have nobody from electronics, therefore, I'm going to close the public hearing and go to unfinished business because, uh, there's no action needed on this, this is only a public hearing.
That's right.
Yeah, we're closing the public hearing at this time. So I'm calling for unfinished business, do we want to do thirty-two? Do I, do I have a motion to untable?
It's thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, mayor, they're, they're in the packet. Suzie, are you going to?
Yes, well, uh, they need to untable them first, so I can.
We need to untable the, all, all three of them?
Are we, are we ready to untable? Are we ready to discuss it?
We're, we're actually recommending to untable and take no action.
Okay.
Well, if we take no action, then, then, we don't, we don't, uh, we don't untable, the item is going to go up.
Okay.
Yeah.
There'll be thirty-two?
Thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four.
Excuse me, mayor.
Thirty-four.
There's somebody on the audience that wants to speak on thirty-two and thirty-three.
But it's not going to be considered, mayor, so we don't need.
That, we, we are not, this is not a public hearing, so, uh, and they did not sign up at the beginning with you?
No.
No? So.
It's not a public hearing, since we're not taking any action, mayor, so we're not requiring input from the public.
Yes.
Okay.
So we're not required, uh, uh, therefore, if, if you can, uh, tell them, tell them that, uh, that they could call tomorrow to the city manager's office if they need, if they need anything.
Okay.
You know, please, and, and.
And of course, we'll give a notice of any future hearings in effect.
Yes, we'll.
Okay.
Thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four, item number thirty-five? Do, do we? No action to untable? No action to untable?
No action, ma'am.
No action to untable?
No action.
No action to untable? No action to untable, Ms. Otero? No action, okay, so we don't untable it, therefore, I'm going to go to ru- routine matters and then, and go to the city manager's comment, city manager, you have the floor.
Uh, yes, uh, mayor, just want to, uh, we, we've have, uh, the past, uh, two weeks, we've had, uh, a very successful, uh, vaccination, um, site at, at the Mission Event Center. Uh, we are coordinating, uh, more to come in the future with the county. Uh, we will be, um, announcing as soon as we receive any, um, information of additional allocations for our, uh, vaccines and, uh, ready to continue that partnership with the county. Um, also, sir, just wanted to announce that, uh, next Monday, we will, the city offices will be closed due to a holiday. Um, however, we do have staff, uh, personnel on call, uh, if, uh, um, emergencies do arise, so we are available. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Perez. Uh, from the mayor's comment, I would like to have a moment of silence, please, uh, join me on a moment of silence for Mr. Jose M. Salinas, who was, uh, our first, uh, our first, uh, captain for Hazardous Materials Division in the city of Mission and retired and now has passed. So will you, we all please rise for a minute and then? Okay, thank you. I also want to let you, the public know that, uh, he is, is due, will be Wednesday, uh, starting at, at.
Yes, the, uh, the services would be, uh, Wednesday at three PM, we'll have, um, his, uh, his services there at Rick Brown Funeral Home.
Okay, thank you, Rick Brown Funeral Home, Thursday, I'm correct, Wednesday at, at three PM is what the fire service, uh, ceremonies are going to be taken care of, but in his honor, as far as that is concerned. And the third item I have is that I would like to call a workshop, uh, for the J, JMB contract for February the seventeenth, uh, at, at two PM, are we okay with that, with that date and time? And also, yes.
SMB, right?
SMB.
SMB.
I'm sorry, SMB, contract.
Yes, sir, and also, uh, to include a presentation for Lions Park as well, right?
Yes, yes, and include the, and, and direct the city secretary's office, to make sure that all appropriate posting is, is, is being done for, for that item and without, uh, I don't have any more, you know, uh, because, uh, Perez mentioned the, 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 the vaccination clinics that went real, extremely well and a lot of, we had approximately eighteen hundred vaccinations that were put on the shoulders and the, and the arms of, of people, you know, and that's where we, we're, that's where we want to, uh, do want to let the public know that, uh, we have, uh, uh, entertained, uh, to allow the Mission Event Center to be a, a permanent vaccination site as needed by the county, you know, for, for the citizens of Mission, so we can be able to, to take care of our average population. Uh, we're asking that all CDC guidelines to be followed, Texas guidelines, guidelines to be followed, county guidelines to be followed, and our city of Mission, uh, guidelines to be followed, Mission, we need to mask up and continue to mask up. Thank you. City council, uh, Mayor Portem, you.
Mayor, I had the privilege and the time, I got a phone call last minute on Saturday to go see a strong man competition. Had never been to anything like that in my life. Uh, I want to congratulate openly to Carlos Lerma, who for the first time ever tried out um, and won second place, so now he's going to nationals. I don't know if you all have had the opportunity to go to our food trucks. Uh, it's amazing how many people were there and, um, the entertainment and how people were being very cautious. You know, I understand that all of us, you know, especially me, have always said time and time again how important it is to social distance and wear your masks. And we can say it time and time again, but one has to have that care and the safety for their own personal health, right, and well-being. And so I saw, uh, just the community coming together and still able to have a good time, but keeping that in mind. And so, uh, kudos to our staff from the EMDC and, and from the own vendors themselves there that, um, has made our food truck very successful. Um, and I only hope that it just, uh, gets better and better and we're on the map for that, so that's my comment, thank you.
Good. Mr. Blatman, you have the floor.
Uh, no comments, ma'am.
Thank you. Calcer, you have the floor.
Uh, no comments, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wellah.
No comment.
Okay. There will be no comments, then, um, we don't have the executive session, we've already done that, let's go to the sermon, the, uh, entertain a motion.
More to adjourn.
Uh, we have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those who oppose, same sign, uh, motion carries by all for the record.